Uh, sorry, my, uh, mic was not on and now. That's better. My mic was not on, so I'm sorry about that. It is now seven o'clock and I call the planning board meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh.
I'd ask everybody to stay.
Stay risen for a moment, for a moment of silence. This coming Thursday is September 11th and enough said. Thank you, everyone. So we are all here. Mr. Evans is on Zoom, so we will be doing roll call votes tonight. Uh, so, planning board attendants, uh, Mr. Samaia?
Yeah, yeah.
Now I got Mr. Drew.
Yep.
Ms. Henderson?
Yeah.
Mr. Robertson?
I'm here.
Mr. Traboo?
Here.
Mr. Ventreska?
President.
And Mr. Parker is here. Okay, uh, that being done, uh, all seven members here, uh, first thing is open microphone, so if anybody is, uh, on Zoom, uh, that is here to be, uh, would like to speak at open mic, please put your hand up. Uh, if there's anybody here in the audience, please come to the podium and, uh, let us know your name and address for the record. And I'll give everybody a moment. Seeing nobody here in the audience, Catherine, anybody on Zoom?
Chair, there are no hands raised.
Wonderful. Now I'll move on to the agenda. Mr. Drew?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on the agenda is a subdivision release for one Purcell Drive.
Thank you. Um, good evening, Attorney Jim Dangora. Um, I recently had the occasion to, uh, run the title to One Purcell Drive in, in Bill Reckel. One Purcell Drive is, uh, part of a sixteen lot subdivision that was approved by you folks back in nineteen sixty-four. Uh, I don't think any of you folks were around back then, but, um, bottom line is all, uh, all but this one lot, Lot sixteen, uh, has been released. In the package that I've given you, I've, uh, I've shown, I've given you the, 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 uh, planning board decision, I've given you the lot releases. I'm asking, uh, for a release of Lot sixteen, uh, from your, uh, planning board rules and regulations. This is a quest to clear title to, to this property. Without it, technically, the lot is still subject to your restrictions, including but not limited to the fact that the lot can't be sold. Um, lot's been in, in one family since nineteen sixty-four, so, uh, it's an issue that has kind of, uh, been kind of pushed by the wayside. Very simply, uh, we ask that Lot sixteen be released. We know, uh, you should be comfortable in doing that because Purcell Drive was in fact, uh, accepted, uh, by the town, uh, in, uh, nineteen sixty-four, nineteen sixty-five. So it appears to me that this release is an order, uh, and, uh, we are simply trying to, to clear title. That's it.
And it has a house there now?
Uh, it's had a house since nineteen sixty-four, uh, and, uh, that's been in one, uh, one ownership, in one family.
Wanted to hear from you. All right, um, look at the board members. Uh, Ms. Henderson, any questions?
Uh, no questions. It's, um, it writes a wrong script nos error.
It appears to be.
Very, very interesting and, um, it's, there was something about note number seven, no, this is the, that's the next one. It clears the title, it writes the wrong, that's all.
Thank you.
Um, at one point I wondered why the notes said that there was a spelling of the name, but I found it later in the registry of deeds.
The spelling of?
Yeah, of a name, I think, uh, Stunt Able.
Oh, Able.
And it's Bailey, they spelled that wrong too.
Yeah.
It was a script no problem.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Robertson?
Uh, no, this appears to be, uh, straightforward. I, I, I was suspicious perhaps that, um, that there was a, get met, but when I looked, was able to decipher the, uh, map that's up, I was able to see that, that was not, uh, didn't in fact be the case. So it does appear that this was a script nos error and that, uh, makes sense to fix this after forty years.
Many, many, many years, yeah.
Oh, sixty years.
Sixty-five, yeah, yeah.
And by the way, for the record, I was alive then, I just wasn't speaking well, so.
Same then, same. I was two years old, Blake, so.
I spoke very well at four.
Questions?
Just, uh, before I go to him, is anywhere we can get that monitor working? You've got the computer. No, I just was wondering. Well, you signed me down here, so, you know. Um, you're thank you, Todd. You know, you mentioned that you're just going to say it's proven there, you have anything to, uh, what the board vote, it says that they definitely voted. You grab one of the lights, he says, I hear you.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry about that. That was on. Um, do you have anything from the, from the select board vote that, back then, that says that they did vote one through sixteen and that the court just missed?
It, it would be the planning board, not, not the Board of Selectmen, um, and so it would have been the planning board to release it, just like you do today. And we don't have any records going back to nineteen sixty-four. Yeah, and like I said, I'm comfortable in presenting this because the road was accepted and that's really the, the key to the restrictions on these lot releases is to make sure that the ways are constructed, so.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Honestly, yeah, just, uh, correct the error, be on, you're all set there, so, good luck, thank you.
Mr. Drew?
I don't have any questions, thank you, it's pretty straightforward.
That's everyone. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to, uh? Oh, yes. Without you here, Mr. Samaia?
It's okay, Chair, I think, I think, I think, it's pretty straightforward, so, um, good luck with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so, again, anybody in the public that would like to, uh, speak on this, it is not really a, a public hearing, but, uh, the residents certainly can give their input, so. Seeing none, um.
Chairman will make a motion, the board, uh, release one Purcell Drive parcel sixteen, uh, sixty-one, one thirty, from subdivision restrictions dating to nineteen sixty-four.
Second.
Mr. Samaia?
I'm here.
Mr. Drew?
Aye.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Ventreska?
Yes.
Mr. Traboo?
Yep.
And I M E S.
Thank you. Have a good night, folks. Thank you. Is that it? No, I want, sorry. You want to adjourn? Stop now.
Mr. Chairman, moving along to item number two, uh, we have an industrial buffer release for Federal Street.
Okay, uh, Catherine?
Chair, if I can take this one, um, town council is, is not here, we can save them a few hours, hopefully. So, when the MBTA community's overlay went onto Federal Street, it was noticed that there is a one hundred foot wide industrial buffer on the old subdivision for that, for the fields there. So, part of the agreement, which was in your package, says that nothing can be built or trees taken down, things like that, with the industrial there. Section, section eight of that agreement then says this will cease when the property is rezoned. Now, an overlay zone has been put on, which we've discussed this probably ad nauseam, you guys already know this, but an overlay zone is not the same as changing the underlying, but once a developer chooses to use the overlay, then it no longer has the underlying. So, once you commit to the overlay, you have to follow the standards of the overlay. Industrial uses are not permitted within that overlay. Therefore, section eight is met. So town council did review it, they've drafted some language, can you pull that one up next? Um, and so they're looking for you to endorse it so that this area can also clear their title.
Okay, everybody has the memo? So I was wondering when this first came on the agenda, what it meant and, um, so my only question for this is, as you just showed that map, there's like a A and B?
Yes, so originally the entire fields did not have Federal Street going through the center of it, it didn't have eight different parcels, it was just Lot A and Lot B. Um, some of the things that the lawyers were looking at is, is it even applicable if it's been further subdivided without any reference of that buffer? So it might really be non-applicable anymore, but at the least, we know that the overlay, once it's developed within the overlay, it wouldn't be industrial anymore.
So my question is, is, when they say they're going to, you know, um, cease this hundred foot buffer, because there are multiple properties now, when they do say property two or three, right, does that mean all of them go away or just on those parcels?
Absolutely. So reading the language that council drafted, can you zoom in anymore? And I know I quoted this part in a memo to you guys. Just reading it now. All right, towards the end, kind of put your curse around there to mark it, thank you. So the planning board, lose three lines. Pursuant to section eight of the agreement, the planning board hereby acknowledges and affirms that the restrictions contained in the agreement cease to apply to multifamily housing projects proposed and constructed. So, for the sites that are already there with industrial buildings, they've already built out that, complying with that industrial buffer. So this would only be applicable to any site plans you might see in the future for the overlay district.
Perfect, just wanted to hear that clarification for everybody out there that might not fully grasp what we're, uh, what we're doing here. So, I'll go around the board, uh, Mr. Ventreska?
Guess my question is, when the MBTA Communities Act came back and there was a section that was taken out of it, was that a substantial enough change to it that, is the, is that actually applicable? Does, do we actually have the MBTA Communities Act in town?
I saw.
Catherine?
Yes, town meeting approved it as, as verified by AG that exact language is.
But she took out a section.
Yes, the sunset clause did not pass AG approval.
Right, so was that a substantial enough change that technically we don't have the MBTA Communities Act and has to go back before town meeting to be voted again?
I do not believe so, I've heard nothing like that.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Henderson?
Uh, yeah, this one was not as straightforward to me as the previous, uh, item. I was wondering, um, I've, several things that I wonder about, so if that hundred feet industrial buffer zone ceases and an MBTA project goes there, and we kind of, uh, easily thought it was a good idea because there was a buffer anyway. And now we're taking the buffer out, and what's that gonna do for the houses on Middlesex Turnpike?
Absolutely, that's a great question. One of the things that I'm happy you guys did with that area is increase the rear setback size and make sure that there would be a substantial buffer. I believe it's forty-five feet, not a hundred feet. Um, but certainly you still have site plan and public hearing process for the development itself. So any applicant can come forward and show that it's still being a good neighbor to those single-family homes to the north.
Thank you. And then the other question I have, uh, uh, point seven in the whole, um, uh, book twenty-four seventy-four page, it mentions the former Boston and Main, we, um, does that, uh, it says something about the former Boston and Main? Because that's where we would like to put, um, I suppose.
I believe that would be the far, the far side, as far away from Concord Road as you can get.
Yeah.
When we, um, access the trails behind Eight Federal Street, for example, and then you're able to get back there. I believe that's the area it's referencing.
So does that stay the same? It says, uh, in addition to the restrictions herein above, they also grant to the town the non-exclusive right in Eastman to use that portion of the land within Lot B marked formerly Boston and May Corporation. And that's the railroad, and that's planned for the bike paths, so we kind of don't want to lose that, right?
I believe those Eastmans through this area have already been finalized.
Hmm. Okay. Uh, yeah, that's all I want to ask, thank you.
Mr. Traboo?
Um, I don't have too much on this. I know that, um, regarding, I think Anthony's question, I think it was a, yeah, separability clause there that we had that if a portion of the MBTA was null and void by the courts, the entire, uh, would, um, law would still be valid, so I believe that we, we did stick that in there when we, um, created it and got it voted on for town meeting. But other than that, yeah, I'm, I don't have any, anything, any, anything else on it. Thank you.
Mr. Samaia?
Um, okay, I don't have any question on that.
Okay, very good. Mr. Drew?
Uh, thank you, I think, um, or at least actually asked the same, similar question that I had, and I think the forty-five foot rear setback actually helps on this, so I'm, I'm fine with this. Appreciate the time, thank you.
Mr. Robertson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, this is troubling, uh, at best, uh, to me. I, I guess the, the first thing, uh, procedurally is, I, I don't know how this even got to us. Um, uh, this is the first time in, in my, uh, time on the board that we've ever had, uh, council, uh, bring something to, uh, to this esteemed body for, uh, for action. And so, um, how did council get involved? Do we have any idea what, what transferred to, uh?
Catherine? Can you?
Yes, so there is, there are property owners interested in developing under the MBTA community zoning, and they're actually the ones to discover that this buffer zone still exists back in the, the depths of the title exams. And so they're the ones that brought it forward and they asked, we think this is not applicable, town council, can you confirm? Town council said yes, but it needs to be recorded at the county, which means the planning board needs to sign.
Right, thank you. Um, so, they chose not to come in, they chose to ask someone else to bring this to this body?
Because this decision would be applicable to any of these properties that might develop under the overlay, not just this particular applicant, yes.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, as, as I read section eight, um, it indicates that, uh, you know, I'm sorry to read it out loud, but, uh, just for folks' awareness, notwithstanding any other provision herein contained, the restrictions imposed and the right in Eastman granted under shall cease and determine upon the rezoning of all or a portion of the site from an industrial district designated under the Barica zoning laws to any district designation in which industrial, commercial, and official office uses are not permitted as a matter of right. So, um, I, but again, you said it, an overlay is not the same as rezoning, I agree with that, uh, so I don't believe it's been rezoned. But if we do consider it rezoned, um, if we recall the MBTA language, um, five E, twelve D, one, Roman numeral three, is very clear that in mixed use, which Federal Street falls under, um, by rights, office, uh, use, and a number of other practices, which I would consider be business or commercial, are allowed by right. So, we haven't met the window, you know, to allow it to be opened, to allow this to be removed, so we shouldn't be taking this action. I'm appalled that our legal counsel, uh, fails to see this, and so I'm perplexed, again, with why this is even here. So, I don't believe, I'm not gonna vote for this, I don't think any of us should, because it hasn't been muster. Anyway, so, I got more to say, but that's enough. No, the answer's no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
Another question, I think.
So, uh, that's all the board members, uh, gonna go to the public, uh, Ms. Adina does have her hand up. I can come back to you, Ms. Henderson. Uh, can you, uh, promote her into the meeting, please?
Good evening, board, um, and I, I don't know how to say this, and I have to remind the board again, I've reminded the selectmen, I, they, so far, nobody wants to take this upon themselves, but I'm gonna let the board know and you can look up state law and feel free to call the AG's office. I have spoken with them, I'm trying to be respectful and let the board handle this first and foremost. Our MBTA zoning has to go back to town meeting. We all know as town meeting members, anytime there's a town meeting, we get a letter, seven days before.
That's not, that's not the agenda item.
Right, but this has to do with MBTA, okay, so if we're gonna discuss the MBTA, MBTA, and this has to do with it, the zoning is no good, needs to go back. This buffer zone, it would have been kicked back by the state, I don't know what's going here, I know that there was bills going back and forth in meetings with town council, I've seen the bills. So, I would hope this board, just like Mr. Robertson stood up and said, no, I hope you bring this back and the MBTA zoning has to, we have to do it right. Isn't that the point of doing things, is to do it correctly? We didn't do it correctly, guys, not on us, we didn't notify and follow the proper channels, and that's what the state says.
Once again, the agenda item is not about the MBTA communities, technically, it's about their use of it.
Right, and this is the zoning, and this is the section of the zoning, correct?
Yep, and Ms. Adina, we're not gonna get into an argument right now about.
I'm not arguing, Mike, I'm letting you know.
Bring a petition as article to the board and, uh, have something kicked back, then, then so be it, but, uh, this board has voted, town meeting has voted, and that's, that's done, so we're gonna move on.
Mike, you know it was wrong.
It's very easy to say no, it's very easy to say no to things, I saw, I saw things get, we just, hold on, Ms. Adina, I am now speaking. I saw last night, one of our boards tell a owner that stood there and said, I wanna make this transaction, and it was over some frickin' bushes.
Like, I'm not telling you no.
So, and, and that's us saying no.
I'm not saying no, I'm saying create that, so they can do it right.
Somebody wants to develop this, and Ms. Adina, I'm still speaking, somebody wants to develop this land, that's progress, that's what we wanted there.
Correct.
And why are we going to halt progress and tell these people that are coming to us, nah, you know what, we put it there, but we don't really want you to do it. That's what, if we said tonight, no, that's, that's the message we would send to the people that want.
A hundred percent.
So, I appreciate you coming in to Ms. Adina, thank you very much.
Progress, no, 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 you're shutting me off. Progress is that we do the process correctly.
You've had your, your, your minutes.
Send the letter out to town meeting, keep it the way it is, Mike, but progress is that we don't allow it to be stopped and halted. And by not notifying town meeting correctly, we did that, we did not do it right.
It will only cease if they come to us with a project.
Mike, they can come to you with a project and fight it now. Do you want that? Do you want that? Do you want lawsuits put against us? No.
For them to come, yes, I, I want them to know that we're willing to work with them, and tonight is a step in that direction, so.
Willing to work with them on zoning that we did not put in legally.
Because I want them to come to us with a project.
Willing to work with zoning that was not put in legally.
I don't want us to tell them no tonight.
That was not put in legally. It wasn't put in legally.
Thank you.
Keep rolling.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak?
Idiots. Uh, Deena Favre, forty-one Boston Road, I was just taking a look at the agreement, I'm not sure if you guys were provided with an entire copy, but I would point you to section five. Um, the agreement was made with the select board, and I'm just curious to know if, um, town council spoke to that and if, if a vote of the select board is required in order to lift the restriction. And then I do have a, an additional question about, um, why the restriction was put into place? Was, if it's an industrial zoning, is there any kind of impact to the land or, or anything to that effect, do we know?
It was just a goodwill gesture back way back.
Like a conservation measure, so to speak?
Buffer between what they were developing and the residence.
Okay.
That would just be my, you know, interpretation of what was going on previously. Catherine?
Yes, so we do have a copy of the council language up on the screen, so one of the things, they did specifically note whether it would be select board or planning board, and they said pursuant to general law, chapter forty-one, section eighty-one B, and article two, section twenty-five of the general bylaws, um, it's the power of the planning board to oversee town development planning, and so it's their power to make the following finding.
I can appreciate that, but the way that this is, the language listed here is written in section five, it specifically says that it's the Board of Selectmen of the town as the chief executive officer. So I would just, would not so much recommend, but maybe think about putting a contingency on the vote and just get clarification on that one point.
Sure, so, Chair, please.
Sure, um, right on the first page of our, uh, packet, um, material, it's the agreement, and in the first section B, it says, "The town, acting through its planning board, has requested GCA to impose certain restrictions on the use of portions of the site." So it was the planning board that requested those restrictions, uh, although maybe a overall agreement was made with the select board, uh, that statement right there is probably what the, um, uh, the, uh, our council is leaning on, that, you know, the planning board was the one that imposed those restrictions.
That makes sense, it does, um, that does make sense. I just, when I saw section five, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't any gray area, so, thank you very much.
And Chair, if I can speak to the contingency, if later it's determined that this does need select board instead, this planning board decision wouldn't need to be contingent, it would just, okay, we need to go get select board instead.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anybody else in the audience here? Um, Ms. Henderson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, another thing is, the, the Yankee Doodle Bike Path is designed through that hundred foot buffer. So if they were to, um, if, if a new potential buyer wanted to, uh, have more access to that buffer, would that in any way, uh, conflict with the plan for the bike path? Have we considered that?
I don't see a conflict because the Eastmans for the bike path would already be in, we already know that any development won't be building on that Eastman.
Okay, okay, the Eastman is already there, yeah, and the other thing would be, the bike path, we'd also have to cut trees, so.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. I, uh, to, to ease your concerns too, Ms. Henderson, the bike path is out for bid right now, and that will probably be built before this gets developed also, so, potentially.
I know, it's out for bid, yeah.
Uh, and it's that section from Middlesex Turnpike to Bedford, um, so it would go right, right, right through there, land.
Road, yeah.
Mr. Robertson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, so I just did want to highlight one, one additional item. Um, so, uh, was a little confused with the explanation about, uh, when the overlay is enacted, then the industrial goes away. My understanding has always been that the underlying zoning remains intact, and so if by chance, this was acquired by these individuals, uh, but then they changed their mind, decided to, uh, not build those houses on it and revert back to an industrial, um, you know, it appears from what was said, that that hundred foot buffer then would, would go away, and, uh, that doesn't seem right, that violates the whole intent of security. And, uh, that doesn't seem right. That violates the whole intent of securing this hundred-foot buffer as long as, uh, this is used for industrial purposes. So, uh, can we get some clarification on that, please?
Catherine?
Yes, so we're pulling that, um, council language up again, referring back to that clause we mentioned a moment ago, which is that it ceases to apply to multifamily housing projects proposed and constructed. So if they change their mind and they revert back to the original industrial building, then the buffer is still there, the building is still there.
So, but if, even after it's constructed, it can still go, again, revert back to the, uh, industrial. And so forty years from now, they decide that MBTA didn't work, and, uh, and they wanna return to industrial, how do we preserve that hundred foot?
So that would be a whole new site plan. Um, I don't know if it would automatically come back for the hundred foot, or if it's, once it's gone, it's gone, but a whole new site plan and town control would still exist.
Right, so, so we violate the intent of the original arrangement, uh, with passing out this thing. And we don't have, have the preservation secured, which was, you know, in, you know, in place at the, at the beginning. It's just wrong, again. We shouldn't be eliminating the hundred-foot buffer. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, perhaps? I'll be quite honest, I don't think anybody knew that this agreement in this full one-hundred-foot buffer existed. I think we all thought it was the, um, regular industrial setbacks that were, uh, on these properties. So again, I, I don't, I, I didn't know about this agreement and this hundred-foot buffer on this property. Uh, I don't think anybody did. It sounds like it's in some old deed, right? So somebody with big pockets is buying the property, and they have, you know, their lawyers digging into these deeds, and they're going, oh, hey, wait a second, uh, there's this thing, we, we might have to, you know. So I think the, again, this is their first step before they spend their millions of dollars on architects, engineers, and site plans, right? That kind of stuff, they wanna know, right? So I think when we did it, there was industrial, and then there was, okay, now we're going to a residential style setback on many areas, right? We were reducing the setback. And so we kind of did a, a halfway on the, on that one there, so we didn't cut that one back as much. Okay. Is there anybody else on the board?
I'm just looking at the plan on, um, the registry of deeds, and Stern's Lane is listed as a part of this, um, plot plan. Where in relation to Stern's Lane is this buffer zone? Because we do know that there are some flooding issues in that neighborhood, so.
It's at the end of Stern's Lane, it looks like. And around those properties. You can see it on the screen up there.
Mr. Chairman, um, when we were discussing MBTA, and the staff can correct me if I'm wrong, um, I figured if anything happens on, on the MBTA parcel, they're gonna have to improve the stormwater, and it might be an improvement for Stern's Lane. That's what I was thinking at the time.
So I will also say, Dina, that I, what I remember seeing, that that bike path is gonna go right along that property line.
I think I remember seeing that too. Yeah, I just wanted to.
To be impacted now by us, like the town itself is gonna be impacting that area. So, um, they won't be coming any closer to Stern's Lane once that bike path is there. They're gonna stay outside of that bike path.
Okay, I just didn't, I wasn't sure where on the plot plan it was, and if it would have any potential impact on the residents who've already had flooding problems over there, so, thank you.
So Catherine, instruct us what the next step would be. Make an endorsement?
Uh, yes, if you could move to endorse the ceasing of the one-hundred-foot industrial zone buffer where property is rezoned under the MBTA overlay.
So moved.
Second.
And, please, okay. Gonna go to a vote. Mr. Simea, how do you vote?
I'm a, I'm a yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Nope.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Drew?
Aye.
Mr. Tribu?
Aye.
Mr. Ventreska?
No.
I am a yes. That is a five to two vote to endorse the, uh, ceasing of the hundred-foot industrial zone, uh, when they enact a multifamily project.
What's up?
Gonna do some signing by guess.
Mr. Chairman, we're moving along. Item number three is a site plan for one-seventy-six Boston Road, the fire station, engine two. The public hearing is open.
Floor is yours when you're ready.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Chris Broyles with Greenman Pearson. Um, I'm here for, uh, one-seventy-six Boston Road. So we were here, uh, last month, uh, or two months ago, um, discussed the proposed fire station. Uh, it was continued, uh, for, uh, review from the town, multiple departments as well as peer review. We have revised the plans and the associated documents, um, stormwater, O and M, um, waiver request. Um, and responded to, uh, two DPW review comments, uh, the peer review letter and Board of Health. The, the major changes to the plan, if you wanna call major, is, um, we, we moved the sidewalk to the right of way to get more separation away from the roadway. Um, the sidewalk to the rear has been, has been widened to four feet. And the other changes to the plan are fairly minor. There was a hood added to a catch basin. Um, tree protection was added as a detail in the plans. Uh, additional erosion system control notes were added to comply with the, um, board's bylaw. And the infiltration system over here was increased. Some additional stone was placed just to allow for a larger storm event to infiltrate. Uh, we did amend our waiver requests. Uh, it didn't change the plan, but we did formally ask for a waiver for the separation for the two driveways, um, based on the, the use requirement. Um, and the only thing that was, uh, changed that wasn't a request is we shifted the dumpster a little bit farther away from the road. It was more just an architectural request, not a town request. The, that's kind of the changes to, um, the plan. Uh, and like I said, we did respond and provide all the revised documents to the board, um, part of the meeting. Um, I do have the green cards here. But I don't know, do you, Chief, or Mark, any comments, or?
No.
I guess, I guess with that, um, open it to questions.
Okay, uh, go to the board. Mr. Tribu?
So, um, I know we, what, did we, you sent a, the, the letter to Mass DOT? Was that already, that was already sent, right? Did we ever get a response back from them on, was, was regarding the, the, was it the three-point turns there?
Yes, so we.
Respond with that?
Yeah, so I, I don't think we have a, a letter from the board yet, so it hasn't been submitted to.
And, oh, wait, no, I, I think, well, that will be submitted, I think, maybe after when all the conditions are finalized.
Yes, okay, where we are with Mass DOT, a, a good, good thing to bring that up is that we've already, we have submitted our application to Mass DOT. It's under twenty-five percent review right now. I believe we're expecting comments, um, by or before, um, like September twenty-six, a couple of weeks from now. And so we still have to go through twenty-five percent review, seventy-five hundred, you know. So once we get the comments in the twenty-five, uh, we'll send them revised plans with these minor revisions, um, including the letter from the board, as, because we've already sent other town, um, uh, letters in, in support. So, and, and actually, it's part of the, the plans that all, uh, uh, that hasn't changed is we do have a, a truck turn, um, plan at the end of the set that was given to Mass DOT.
Okay.
And to the board.
Yeah, no, that was just, I just wanted to make sure, so like, I think we, we, we kind of went, that was one of the things we went on. I think the last time was just making sure that you could turn in that and go out in the middle of the road, and there was a bunch of issues there. I'm, I'm glad to see, you said it was widened to four feet in the, in the back there.
On the side, yes.
Yes, so that's, and, so that's, it's good that that was adjusted. And I do like the aesthetic feature that you had, like aesthetically putting the dumpster back, so that's good. So, um, overall, it seems like it's going in the right direction, so I guess, uh, we'll, we'll have to wait for further comment from them, and hopefully make a few, you know, make the, you know, small adjustments, and you guys will be on your way with this, so. I don't have, uh, I don't have any other, any comments at this time.
Mr. Ventreska?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so I wasn't here last meeting, but I did watch meeting on Sunday to kind of get caught up with it. So a lot of the questions that I did have were pretty much answered during the end, so I was glad they came up. My only, I guess my only, well, there's two concerns. One is the turnaround, so I'm hoping we can do that. So yes, I am supportive, I will be supporting the letter when it comes around to us. Um, and also what you mentioned in Pinehurst, I wish they had done that before they repaved. So, you know, getting the lights down there, so you have your, um, your safe turns down at the Pinehurst Station, which, but it is what it is with the state. Um, I guess, but my only concern is the shared driveway. I know we have this letter here, but is there some way that this can be memorialized, you know, whether it's a ninety-nine-year lease or whatever it is, so that way everyone knows that this exists if and when that person goes to sell the property, or if the town ends up by abandoning the property, that sort of thing. Because right now, all I see is just, you know, the, a piece of paper, but it's.
Mark Lomia, Director of Permanence, is this in regards to the encroachment?
The shared driveway on the.
Of the residential abutment? I think the intent of the project is to grant them an easement.
Okay.
At some point, once we get to construction, and, you know, there's been discussions with the neighbor, but there's no benefit to the town for that property, and let's square it away fully, uh, the neighbor to the north.
Yep.
So that they have it legally.
Yeah, right, because I just don't want any, because.
Right.
Some issue can come up.
Yep.
And then, you know, as we know, what happened in Pinehurst recently, so.
Yep, that's the intent, though.
Okay, appreciate that, thank you.
Believe going in front of the select board or town meeting, it might be.
Okay. Um, and then you initially had a plan with the sidewalk being three feet, you then changed it to four feet. How were you able to grab that foot without interfering with any of the operations?
So what we did is we, there was some landscaping, um, around the, uh, the side here. Um, we, we moved it around a little bit, um, so that we weren't, you know, impacting the.
You're taking from landscaping, you're not operations.
Yeah, so there's, there's not much back there besides some landscaping. So we had the flexibility, it's only, it was only a foot.
Okay, great, thank you, appreciate it.
Set?
Yep.
Mr. Simea, any questions?
Chair, I don't have any question at this time.
All right, perfect. Uh, Ms. Henderson?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, I do have a couple of questions, thank you. Um, so, uh, it's been a, a bit of back and forth. Um, I, I believe we have a couple, um, items that you provide a response, and yet we're not certain that, waste, the stormwater folks or DPW is in agreement, so, uh.
So I just heard from them this afternoon, um, after four. So Stormwater says that there's still some technical comments, but that they can be revised after, uh, or before the final stormwater, but after it goes through the planning board. Um, and then DPW said the same thing, any outstanding issues with the utilities can be taken care of before the building permit is issued.
So, Mr. Chair, would have to be a contingency or lien? If we're ready to vote tonight?
Yes, we would have to add that to a condition.
Okay, um, uh, thank you, let's see, um. You talked about, uh, there was a requirement for the sidewalk along Boston Road being five feet wide.
Uh, yes.
So I wasn't able to see dimensionally that.
It varies a little bit, um, so it's just because there's a sidewalk here, and then it's a crosswalk, and then it's a ramp. And then it's, it's a crosswalk, so. We checked the, the dimensions, and they're over five feet, yeah, so, um, that's why we were able to say, it just, it would have been, it got too crowded with like another dimension line, so.
Okay, very good, excellent, thank you. Um, let's see, there was another, uh, and so, so sadly, um, you know, one of, one of the liens is, uh, there was a, a request for be able to, to, uh, contain a hundred-year flood. You said we can do a two-year flood, um, because there's not enough space. Another couple of places, the responses are, yeah, the site's just too small, um, you know, to meet all the requirements that we have. Uh, it's, it's unfortunate that we're having to make some compromises. Um, this is not against you, please, I understand, but, you know, because, uh, you know, we're shoehorning this in, um, you know, on this, uh, on this small lot, but, um, you know, it's, uh, we, we, I, I'd like to think that, that we, you know, you know, we, we could do better in the future, that's for sure. Okay, in, uh, in your waiver, uh, we did talk last time about the fact there's just not room for, uh, for all the trees, so that you're asking for a reduction of two.
Yeah, it was, over here, yeah, that was the only waiver on the, uh, trees.
Okay, and then the, uh, the, the, uh, driveway spacing. And so what we're talking about then is that the island, is what I'll call it, between the truck driveway and the customer driveway, uh, should be fifty feet, and yet there's only room for twenty-eight. Again, you know, because we just don't have a large enough lot, but, um, I was wondering, uh, how much wider is the truck driveway, uh, because of the requirement to do those three-point turns in the driveway instead of in the, uh, on Boston Road?
I don't have an exact number, but I mean, as you can imagine, if you didn't have to do the three-point turn, um, in the driveway. I think as I, I said in the, um, maybe the waiver or the response, um, you know, the, the, I guess my view of the. Bylaw is, you know, to, for, for the public, you know, to not have so many people coming in and out, you know, the two dark driveways, and where one's for the fire department, and one's for the, the public or, you know, customers. I wouldn't say it doesn't apply, but it's, I think, worth mentioning. But to, to your, your question here, you see the blue is the truck turn. So in, in some maneuvers, you know, you could, let's say, potentially make an error, but, um, like this maneuver here, where they come in, they're coming all the way over here, and then to get in, they gotta like, you know, use over here. So they are reducing this. And I, I will say, the very first plan we showed Mass DOT, it was wider, because the alignment made more sense, and they asked us to reduce it as much as possible. Um, you know, Mass, this, Mass DOT is reviewing these driveways, and, and they don't want, they made it pretty clear that they don't like the extremely wide driveways, but they understand the use requires it, so.
Right, I mean, I mean, they're, they're insisting that you, you, you turn around in, in the driveway, not in the road. I mean, you know. the driveway, not in the road. I mean, you know, if they allowed you to do it in the road, you could have, you know, we can meet that 50-foot, correct?
I don't have the, the, the diagrams in front of me. I know that we had looked at very early on different alternatives, but, um, you know, this is what the, the town is and the department's looking for, and has been discussed with Mass DOT, is to do the, um, turnarounds on the, in the driveway. So, we have reduced them as, as much as we can, um, to, to, you know, listen to the board as also, as well as, uh, Mass DOT. Oh, yeah, yeah, sure, absolutely.
Originally, DOT want, our, our turns were out in the road. We're choosing or asking not to have to turn around in the road. We have it, we have to do it down in Pinehurst, because we put a lot more on a smaller lot. Uh, we didn't have the room to push the building to the back anymore. This one, we're trying to have our turns off the road. Um, it's a safety issue for us if we're trying to have, you know, because we have backing-up policies, we have to have people behind the truck in the street while, if we were going to do the three-point turn in the road. Um, we wanted to have all of our turns off-street, in the parking area, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, in the, in the driveway area, to keep our members off of, uh, out of harm's way as much as possible. We wanted the wider driveway, DOT wanted it shortened for a sidewalk issue. Basically, what we said was the sidewalk to where, it's not go, there's, there's no other sidewalk beyond this, this lot. So, we compromised and closed it down a little bit, but, again, we're trying to do as much of our maneuvering within the property, so that, um, for our safety and for the public's safety.
Chief, thank you very much for that clarification. I, for some reason, last month, I walked away thinking that the state, uh, uh, was mandating that we do that turnaround in the driveway, not, uh, not, uh, instead of in the road, so I, I-
We, we had, we, there were plans where it was turned, you know, the, the turning, uh, was in the road, and we asked to push it as far in as we could for those reasons.
So, uh, thank you. With that, I, I am supporter of both the waiver and the variance. Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drew?
Uh, thank you, Chris, still my question. I think, um, obviously, this is long overdue, and I look forward to supporting this. Hopefully, we'd that letter out and get the three-point turn approved, the way we asked. Thank you.
Uh, I have no further questions. Um, I'll ask that if there's anybody on Zoom that would like to speak, uh, now would be the time to raise your hand. Anybody in the room here that would like to, uh, come and speak about the fire station? Rise and approach the podium. So, we can roll back if, Tony? So, seeing nobody with hands up on Zoom? Uh, Tony?
Thank you. Um, when, what is going to happen with the current fire station land? Does anyone have any idea, um, are we going to sell that off, uh, or what's the plan here?
Tony? Chief, you want to throw a dot at that for us?
The reason why I'm asked is I'm kind of, we're taking land off the tax rolls, build a station, which is fine, but now we have this lot that's going to eventually become vacant, and I'm hoping that we can put some of it back to start getting some tax revenue back in, but uh, is my hope when we do these things.
If I could, whatever happens with that property will happen after I retire. So, if I, if I, if I could, you know, just build a station, I'd be, I'd be very happy. Um, one of the reasons that we had to find another lot was that land is in the flood zone, uh, of the river. How that will get taken care of, uh, will, will not be as easy as just selling the lot. Um, so, I'm, I'm not trying to be the bearer of bad news, but, uh, it, whatever happens with that may take an extended period of time to, to sort out. It is considered, this is why we had to move, is considered part of the river, and the river was coming into the building with us. Um, you know, so, uh, I, I, I can't say what will happen or how long it will take, um, for that, um, to be resolved. In the meantime, the building is not condemnable, we're living in it still, and, and it could be used for certain.
Get you out of here and you get the guys in there soon.
Uh, yes, um, but, uh, to answer your question, I, I don't know how long it will be and, and, and what the value will be, uh, afterwards. Something, but it, it, it's going to take more than, than just, you know, all right, it's, it's, we're not, we're out of there and it's, it's up for sale. You know, there are environmental issues to, uh, to deal with, so.
Fair enough, thank you.
Um, so again, no public, uh, hands up?
Chair, there are no hands raised.
So, we could just condition, at this point, as, uh, Blake mentioned, there's a few open questions with Stormwater and DPW. Uh, I believe it's our standard conditions anyway, is that they meet Stormwater and DPW requirements, so do we need to add another condition, or I'm, I'll ask your opinion on that?
Sheriff, I may?
Sure.
In terms of, you know, adding a condition for Stormwater, whether the kitchen, conditions there or not, the project can't proceed until they can demonstrate that they meet those requirements and a Stormwater permit's issued. This is like the first step, um, I know, in reviewing some of the comments and talking to DPW, some of the stuff was starting to get into the weeds with, you know, type of copper for the water lines, um-
Yeah, I'm not worried about that.
Yeah, so, the, the Stormwater, whether the conditions there or not, to get a building permit, they need a Stormwater permit. To get a Stormwater permit, they need to comply with the regulations.
Are you, Blake? Okay. Um, I, I, I don't know, I'm not going to speak for everybody, but maybe you can just nod your head. We good to vote for this to get these guys off of the planning board plate, and they can, you know, keep pounding the other plates and get this thing going, because I don't want to hold them up another month, and if they get everything done, and then they're like, oh, we could have just got that planning board thing last month. Um, because lord knows, guess what, later on this meeting, we're going to talk about next month's meeting. Um, so, um, Charlie was. Um, so, I'm okay with voting for it tonight, if everybody else-
You sure?
Yes.
We, we want to make sure the chief's still the chief when they- Got it close.
Put to vote?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I just want to, so, Kat, we, we would be good to vote on this tonight, as long as we're good, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it, voting it tonight, but I was just curious to see it.
So, the only thing that you guys don't have is the peer reviewers' thumbs up after the revisions. So, in reading the response to peer review, I don't see any issues, other things like, um, the pipe is to be sized per the 25-year storm event, and the response is, the calculation's been added to the report. So, I don't think that peer review could have any issues with comments like that. So, I see no issues, but just knowing that we're not letting them give that final thumbs up, if you guys wanted to, you did read the response, or the, you wrote the response to peer review.
Back when we get a comeback.
Peer reviewer's song.
They're on-
Yeah, hi, this is Danielle Leonor with Kim Lee Horn as the peer reviewer.
Hey. So, Chair-
Yeah, sorry, um, yes, go ahead, uh, would like your opinion on, uh, on the responses, uh, whether it's satisfactory or not.
Our team received them this afternoon, so we'll go through them as quickly as possible and provide a response as quickly as possible, but if the, um, the letter states that items were addressed, we'll just confirm that they're there, um, and hope to move through that process quickly.
Thank you very much.
Can add that to a condition, or is that already a standing condition?
Well, and we add it to the meeting on the 15th.
Good point.
Not even a week delay.
You take a final vote, was, would, um, would you be able to have the, uh, comments back to us, so we could review it for our extra special meeting on, uh, Monday, September 15th?
We will, yeah, we'll try to get into it this week and get it wrapped up by the end of the week.
All right, yeah, I think that's a, a great, uh-
Compromise.
Compromise, Mr. Robertson. Uh, so, give us a couple extra days, uh, we have another meeting, thankfully, uh, and we don't have to wait till mid to late October to, uh, see you again, so, um-
Initially, October, I don't know which one it was, I know it was nothing there, but it's something where it happened.
Right.
At the latest, it would be that day.
Right. We should be good to put it on the agenda at the next meeting. I don't think we'll need the 29th.
That, Mr. Chairman, will make a motion, we continue the, uh, public hearing on the, on 176, uh, Boston Road until Monday, September 15th.
Second. Mr. Simea?
I may, yes.
Mr. Drew?
Aye.
Yeah, that's okay, I just won't be there to vote.
She's a yes.
Mr. Flaherty? Yes.
Mr. Trubu?
Yes.
Mr. Ventreska?
Yes.
Thank you.
All set to go?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, next item is item number four, mixed-use special permit, mixed-use special permit for 409 Boston Road, and I'm told we're going to continue that.
Yes, so we got one more, uh, continuance request. Um, the applicant is working with a lawyer, we're meeting, uh, with the lawyer on Thursday for pre-op meeting.
It won't be for Monday, so do we have a date in October?
It'll be for October. Yeah.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we, uh, continue this till the October meeting.
Sergeant?
We don't need a special date yet.
So, well, that's going to kind of come up on the staff, um-
Okay.
Staff updates under other business. Uh, we're going to discuss our October meeting night, because it could potentially conflict with a third night of town meeting, so, um, don't want to state a time certain, October 14th, if the board decides that we're going to do, um, the next Wednesday, or something like that.
Yep.
So, just, uh, that's why I asked, uh, Mr. Drew for a, uh, October meeting.
Okay. You used to do time certain to the, to the hour.
Yeah.
We don't do that anymore.
Right. Um, all right, so, uh, motion to continue, Mr. Simea?
I may, yes.
Mr. Ventreska?
Yes.
Mr. Trubu?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
And I am, yes.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion, open a public hearing on the fall town meeting warrant.
Uh, I did not second it. Uh, maybe Trubu?
Chair, if we may, can we just verify who seconded that last motion for the continuance?
That was, uh, Tony-
Thank you.
Ventreska. Okay, um, so, there's a motion to open the public hearing for-
Open it for the warrant. I figure that covers both, correct?
We have to open separately, Catherine?
You would open the public hearing for Article 33.
Just each article separate, or the warrant as a whole?
Each separate.
I believe each one separately.
Uh, that's fine, I'll make a motion then to open the public hearing for Article 33, dog daycare.
And second by Mr. Ventreska, Mr. Simea?
Yes.
Drew?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Trubu?
Yes.
Ventreska?
Yes.
And I am, yes. Okay, so, I'll put this down to Catherine, since we are the applicant.
All right, so first, I will share the preliminary warrant language up on the screen as recently reviewed and edited by Town Council.
Chair, are we supposed to be able to read that?
I'm trying to zoom, there's a lot of pop-ups.
When was that sent?
Um, today, right, we got it in email today.
We can print hard copies and run it in really quick if anyone would like it in front of them.
Yes, please.
Got it.
Hang tight with us, uh, sorry for the delay.
Thank you.
Chair, so now that everyone has a hard copy in front of them as well, in case you can't see the screen in the room, um, where it previously said to vote to amend the required findings in Section 76, and now says to see if the town will vote to amend Section 76B, dog care, dog daycare or dog training required findings of the proposed Bilverca zoning bylaws, May Annual Town Meeting 2025, by deleting the strike-through text and inserting the bold text as follows. So, they cleaned up that language, made it a little bit more legalese than what our original draft had. And then down in the new line item, where previously we had suggested it say, the business must maintain a kennel license, it now says a kennel license for the premises must be maintained.
Passive instead of active.
And now it no longer fits on one page, unfortunately, but maybe they'll play with the margins.
Any questions from the board members? Uh, Ms. Anderson?
No questions. No questions.
Uh, Mr. Samaa.
No questions, Chair.
Mr. Drew?
I don't have any questions, just to point out also that, um, the beginning time is six-thirty instead of seven, and then we did strike, um, at the previous meeting, we decided to strike, uh, point number seven, and that's been deleted here also.
Thank, thank you. Uh, Mr. Trabu?
No questions.
Mr. Ventresca?
We're confident we have caught all, everything, and we're not gonna, we didn't miss anything in us, in the bylaws, like what happened in the spring.
Yes, I am confident. In fact, when we move on to the table of uses, when we talk about those special permit required findings, if we start messing with which zones this use, this particular use is now allowed in, that text change is also ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Robertson?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I did receive communications from, uh, from two, uh, uh, concerned citizens in town on, on this issue. Uh, one is online and one is present in the room, and so I do look forward to, uh, to hearing their concerns as they appear to have some, uh, some good merit. Thank you.
Alright, so that's all our board members. Uh, I will go to the public, so if you're on Zoom, please. Raise your hand. Uh, if you're in. Building, please come up to the microphone. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Diana Saunders. I live at twenty Ox Road in North Barica. I've talked to Mike and I talked to Mr. Robinson, and I've talked to the state. So, to put this all together, the state is Ollie's Law, the whole thing. It's about a dog being mauled and added daycare. So. And I was, as Anthony knows, um, last year, when this came up in the spring, I also voiced concerns. I am a dog owner. I have two dogs. I don't have a problem with the doggy daycare. Okay, there's no problem with the doggy daycare. My problem is that even when I spoke to the state, again, Barica looks like idiots to the state because the state said, why are you doing this now? You're gonna have to change it in six months. And I came and I talked to Catherine about this. It doesn't seem to me to change something now because this is exactly what's gonna happen, and she agreed with me. So if you guys, if this warrant goes through. Goes through town meeting, it gets approved. They get their license, and what happens? The state changes it, they're grandfathered in. We already have a doggy daycare here that all, that works, has been working with not a problem, and they do do training. And they do this fifteen dog limit. I haven't been there myself, well, actually. I was, you know, a long time ago, but I have no affiliation with them. That's number one, is why are we changing it now when we're gonna have to change it in six months? Doesn't make sense to me. Second of all, we're gonna issue a license. You know, I know it's going, not through markets, going through, um, animal control. So we're gonna go issue a license that's gonna get grandfathered in, and we're gonna get another. We don't know what the, we do not know what the state's gonna change at all. We have no idea. And even Catherine, I told her, I even played the tape from the guy from the state that says, why are you doing this now? Alright, if the state's telling us, why are we doing it now, we should like wake up and say, why are we doing it now? Because it doesn't make sense. The other thing is a kennel license. How many dogs can you have in a kennel license? By the, by Barica's law? Fifteen. So it's a wash. You're getting rid of the daycare, this language that says you can only have fifteen dogs, but we're getting, you have to get a kennel license, so you can, you can not get, get a kennel license for fifteen dogs. So you're not, you're only changing half of, half of it. So. What is the use of this article? The other thing is that there was petitioners to this article. Instead. You guys all voted last month for us to take it on, the planning board, and as Catherine said, we spent our money. You spent my taxpayers' money on a petitioner's article. So now, does that mean that we're gonna pick and choose what petitioner articles we're gonna sup, take as planning board members? And go through and pay for the legal? I mean, you're setting precedents here. I mean. I see no reason why we did that.
That was under the advisement of the building commissioner and animal, animal control because the previous time they advised us not to do this, but this time around, they did advise us to do this. So we, as the planning board, took their advisement and said, we had two different petitioners, one last year and a different one this year. And now our town said, no, we will take control of this. We're the ones that now are coming together, the heads, so. You go into the state, I don't know if we went to the state, I don't go calling the state, I ain't got time to go call the state. If, so, so riddle me this, right?
Do anything you want.
Riddle me this. We do this, what is, it doesn't change the licenses in town, they still can only have fifteen.
They can still have fifteen, that's all they can have.
All they can have, so even if we take it out of this, they can still only have fifteen, so it's not increasing their volume. We're not, we're not taking away something that says now they can have twenty-five. Their license only allows them fifteen. So. I don't see any problem with that because we're telling them, we're, in our bylaw, it says you have to have an active kennel license. We don't control the licenses. That's in another room in this building, right? And so they control how many they're going to allow. Right, so I don't see an issue with that, right? So we, we're just saying you have to have an active kennel license. That kennel license is determined by somebody else, not the planning board. So what I'm, I'm still not understanding, right? So this person comes in and they get their license, it's the, if there's five people pounding down Donna's door the end of October after fall town meeting, and we ratify this thing, and there's five people that come in, I want a new doggy daycare because I can have fifty dogs in my head. Hell no, you can only have fifteen. So what does it change?
The change is this.
What's the change? They can still only have fifteen.
Aren't you guys in charge of zoning?
We are in charge of zoning.
Zoning.
Not licensing.
Right. Zoning. Okay, so I called the state, as I've repeatedly said, and the, the whole thing is going to change, including the zoning. So this is my whole point, is we're gonna end up, why don't we just wait for the state to do their zoning change? Because they're doing it. They're in talks. If you read the article, uh, Ollie's Law, there's like, I don't know, there's veterinarians, there's dog walkers, there's, everybody's on that commit, there's eighteen people on that committee. And I, the reason I'm not, the reason why I'm invested is because I, I love dogs. And I don't want Barica to have another something that we're gonna regret in six months. So they're gonna, if the state's
Three minutes.
Already taken this on, that they're gonna change it.
Alright, so let me, um, you've said that a few times. So let me just kick it down to our staff. Catherine? Can you enlighten the board about your conversation with Ms. Saunders and how you responded to her and, and your advisement for our board with this warrant article, please?
Absolutely. So the voicemail that she played for me was Mike, unknown last name. He identified himself in the recording as being from the Department of Agriculture, and he heard that she has questions and she can call him back. So within our direct conversation, she said that in the conversation she had with him, at this point, it's now hearsay, but because they don't know what regulations it might be, is it possible that zoning regulations might be required out of this, not just licensing regulations? We just don't really predict any of that. The point of this article is to make sure that any of those standards that are coming down with Ollie's Law, the current standards and any future standards are with the licensing, not with the zoning. As far as grandfathering goes, zoning gets grandfathered, licensing does not. If you want your next annual license renewal, you meet the standards of that year.
I still think that if we change it, it doesn't change anything. Yes, Mr. Lulunia?
In regards to whether it's petitioner's article or planning article, it was recommended that the town take this on. As we've seen in the past, a petitioner comes forward and they want to put an article together. That article's written specifically for, to them for their business plan, what benefits them, and doesn't look at the town as a total. We've had, I think, three amendments to this. Uh, it was added a few years back, an industrial. That never went forward. We've had, um, you know, the fifteen dog, uh, daycare license, and what I've found as the zoning enforcement officer is I don't have the background or equipped to know what's the best for the animals and the care. I can read the book, I can go count dogs, but are they being taken out? Is the place clean? Is it, that's a function of animal, animal control. So what this does is kind of separate and say, zoning-wise, these are the appropriated areas for dog daycare. The care of the dogs, the licensing of the dogs, the inspections of the dogs is all done by animal control as it should be. I would equate it to the same as, you know, if we wrote zoning, we have a gun store down the street. You are certainly not gonna put the requirements of who can get a gun and how many guns with the building department. We have a whole separate set of licensing. We have professionals that are involved in doing that. Let's keep it that way, the people that are, you know, professional and have the background for it to take care of that part. That's the licensing part, that's animal control. I think this cleans it up, makes it easier for everyone. You have the right individuals involved doing the right aspects of the job. And I would concur, you know, what, what, what Catherine said is that zoning gets grandfathered in. Licensing does not, unless the state specifically puts it in their license and requirements, but most of the time when they make these changes, they're retroactive. Thank you.
Thank you.
So like I said, the zoning, when I talked to, to Michael, the zoning is going to be changed. There's a whole, it's a whole thing that's gonna be changed. Animal control has been mentioned in Ollie's article. They are the ones who control how many handlers, how many dogs, um, if the place is clean, if there's any fines, it goes through them. The zoning, that's the point, it, at, if you ask Catherine, what I asked her to add to this article, I only asked for one thing. That they, um, whatever the zoning law is that they change, because see, they're still meeting and everything, so they can't even say, you know, what it might be. They have no idea. They're not gonna come down, they have, it was passed, they have eighteen months to come down with all the rules and regulations, which will be in June, not that far away. And I don't know what the zoning laws are gonna be. Just add something to the article that says, you know, when the, if there's a zoning law, you know, that they have to, they won't be grandfathered in. Simple. Because if we, if we grandfather this in, because it will be granted in, grandfathered in, it has to be, because that's what Catherine said, it, it would be. At the town meeting, once it gets approved, they can go get their license.
New licenses.
The new license. They can go get their license, but they will be granted fathered in, as you just said, under the zoning.
Un, under the zoning, and then their license maxes out at fifteen dogs.
Right, but the, my, again, it's the zoning.
Chair, if I may.
Catherine?
Um, I wasn't actually looking to explain yet. I'd like to get through public comment. I know we still have more of that before your deliberation. I can pull up any, uh, I typed in Ollie's Law regulations into Google. I got an AI summary of their key regulations and what they expect. So that might help you guys determine if you expect zoning changes and how this zoning draft might, might be affected by that or not.
Just to let you know that the guy that I talked to is on the advisory committee. He's in charge of it.
Thank you, Diana.
You should listen to someone else.
Yep.
Hello. Um, my name is Laureen Knowles, three Radcliffe Road. Um, I am well-versed in Ollie's Law. I've watched the meetings, I've read the minutes, I've read the law. I've looked at all the slides, so I understand how this law, um, has been structured. And I'm not sure what, um, Ms. Saunders has inferred from her conversation, um, with, um, Michael, but um, the law has already been passed, a committee has been formed, and the purpose of the committee is to um, set best practices, regulations, that sort of thing. It's not gonna change the letter of the law, which is what we're talking about tonight, which is that the animal control officers will determine the number of dogs, the capacity, based on specific safety factors, training of attendance, all that sort of thing, that also depends, and it's a case-by-case basis, like we talked about last demos here. It depends on the layout of your facility, how many people you have, how well-trained they are, what your facility is doing, is it training, is it daycare? And they will make these determinations. I don't think there's any advantage to waiting a whole another year to do this. If we bring this to town meeting now, because we're ready, um, and town meeting passes it, the ACOs can begin to work with the existing businesses to bring everything into compliance that, you know, it, it's not to layer all these things in. So June first of next year is when they have to have all their work done. And then, then the committee sunsets at the end of, end of next year. So, um, that's how it works. Um, I really hope that we can move this forward tonight, because I think it's good for the town, it's good for the businesses, it's good for, bringing other businesses to town and, um, other people from other towns because um, there aren't that many daycares out there, and people do come from other towns to come here, so. Um, I'd also, let's see. Um, I think that was kind of all I wanted to say. Does anybody have any questions about the law that I can? I can offer tonight?
Any questions myself? Thank you.
Okay. Oh, and one more thing, um, and I know that people are getting stuck on this fifteen dog cap. As we discussed last time, the, the fifteen dog cap was an arbitrary number, right? It wasn't really based on anything. What the ACOs will do now is the existing businesses, say they have, they're limited to fifteen. Um, and I have spoken with them about this. They're not gonna say, okay, now you can have thirty tomorrow. What they're gonna do is they'll do another assessment, and then they'll say, well, maybe we'll do, we'll let you have eighteen dogs for six months, let's see how it goes. Then, okay, then you can come back and ask, maybe I want to have twenty. Okay, well, this is what you need to do to have twenty. And that's how it works, and that's how you build a partnership with the town, with the licensing authority and these businesses. And, um, I can tell you that other towns are watching us right now, other surrounding towns, to see how we do this, so they can copy us. So I think we should set the example. I think that we should bring this to town meeting this fall. Thank you.
Ms. Adina again has her hand up online.
Kelly, go ahead.
Uh, yes, Mike, I just have a couple of questions. You did say, we know that the kennel licenses of, um, fifteen dogs, and that's a kennel, so kennel is different from the doggy daycare what's being asked today. Um, the doggy daycare general business is fifteen, industrial is twenty. Um, we know a year ago, when this article was coming before town meeting, and, and they decided to pull it, they had in there where it kind of said up to thirty, I think in the industrial, but that's passed, now we're looking forward. Now, you said yourself, the kennel license and to operate a dog daycare, you can kennel fifteen dogs. My question is, why are we striking out if, and Laureen was just up there with great explanation, if this, why are we striking out the amount of dogs now if the state is going in and she, you know, everybody's watching, and I get it, the dog, it, it's up to our, um, dog offices to enforce. We have two businesses what run right now at fifteen. And I think what some people are afraid of is the grandfather clock part being put in. Would it, what happens if a business comes in and is not a good business and wanted to put in more than fifteen dogs because we don't have an amount there? And they've got grandfathered in, we all of a sudden had a bad daycare. And I don't think what we have or the opponents before us, the applicants are bad. I never want to think anybody's bad, but is it so harmful to leave a number in there right now and just to wait to the spring again? Is there harm just waiting a couple more months? I guess that's the overall. What is the harm?
Mr. Chair, if I made a, to try and clarify, I think this- Mr. Chair, if I made a, to try and clarify, I think there's some confusion between Ollie's law and zoning. Ollie's law is not a zoning law. Zoning is set by the town, typically done through planning. Zoning is only what locations are appropriate in any conditions we have to put on it. As this board is aware, there was another article that came back, came in the spring that had a formula to measure length of dogs, to determine area of dogs, which I opposed because that would have been a zoning change. And it would have fallen on my staff, who's not equipped nor trained to go out and measure dogs. We've had numerous discussions with animal control. They are there, the people in that position love animals, they're there for the best interests of the animals. They're going to do what's right for the animals. They're the ones who should determine. We have an arbitrary number of 15. Can I put 15 bull mastiffs in your car? Or would you rather have 15 chihuahuas? There's a difference in size of breed, needs of different breeds. That should all be determined by the kennel licensing and animal control. Someone may want to do just bull mastiffs and have a smaller space. Those are big dogs that have different requirements than smaller, you know, poodles, chihuahuas. But I think what we're getting confused with here is Ollie's law is not zoning. It's not, as far as I know, going to be grandfathered again unless I said, like I said, the state doesn't make it retroactive. We're just talking about zoning here. I don't believe there's going to be anybody grandfathered in for the zoning. We have two established businesses. When the kennel law changes, they're going to have to comply with that kennel law. That's going to be a mass general law, it's going to be enforced. This puts the care, the quantity, the health of the animals where it should be with the animal control. And zoning is just simply saying residential neighborhood is probably not the appropriate place for this. General business maybe, industrial maybe. But we're not ticking an arbitrary number and saying, you know, this is the best interest of everybody involved, it's only 15 dogs there, it's eight dogs. Because that's going to vary on space, conditions, size, what they offer in there, and it'll give animal control the ability to go in and do enforcement immediately. Whereas what we've run into in the past is animal controller go out, there's 16 dogs there. Well, technically, they can't do anything about it. They have to come down to the building department and ask for zoning enforcement to go out because it's a violation of the zoning, not the animal control law. So then we have to send a building inspector out there, and lo and behold, they go out, the dog's gone. Now, there's only 15 dogs that are in compliance, and it's just, it puts the enforcement where it should be and separates the two. I recommend that we proceed with this article. I think it's the right thing that the town sponsors it and looks at the best interests of the town as a whole and not a petitioner, again, who is, you know, looking for whatever business they want to move in and their best interest and what they need. I think there's a lot of people that have been involved in this, a lot of discussions, animal control's been involved, my office is involved, Catherine's been involved, the town manager's office. I think what we have at this point is good, and I would recommend, you know, moving it forward to the town meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Adina?
No, I was just curious, why did we always just have 15 dogs then? Was it a protection or just a standard thing we had? If Mark could answer that, I was just, I mean, they always had it on there, so I just didn't understand then.
When our zoning bylaws were created back in lord knows which decade.
It's 20 years.
It's only 20 years old. I mean, again, it's, it's one of those things that unless you were there, we don't, we all don't know why, and, you know, back then, maybe it was, you know, I mean, dogs have definitely increased in their liking, you know, and daycare walkers and all that has increased over time with, you know, people that have jobs. So, you know, life is different than it was in 1980, so.
I have a second question. You know how we have square footage for people in a building? So this is going to be the same with the animals in the building, correct? So many square feet for so many dogs?
No. No, there's, they're just a minimum requirement for so much area for them to have for these kennels. So that's where, you know, again, Mark is speaking to zoning and enforcement. Mark, Mark can go out there, his guys can go out there and tape off and say, yes, they got 1,000 square feet, they have 1,500 square feet, check. And they're in the right, they're in the right area for a kennel, check. And then that's when he turns it over, and then the animal control comes in and says, okay, you know, all right, I see your space, you know, you have 15 dogs, maybe we'll give them 18, you know, but it also depends on how many people are working that business too. How many, how many dogs per person, right? It's just like a classroom, how many kids per a teacher. So I'm not an expert in that, and Mark is not an expert in that. So I think, again, we're tying this to that general law, and if mass general law changes that general law with they can have so many dogs, then it automatically changes. And we don't have to do anything, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, for state, for big dogs, it's 75 square feet, for little dogs, it's 40 square feet. And that is directly from the state. Again, my only point, I'm not, I'm not discouraging a business, I'm just asking for one thing. Too far to be put in that they can't be grandfathered in in a zoning district. There is going to be changes.
Dawn, Diana, we're not changing the zoning of where these businesses can go with this, right? You understand that, right?
I understand that.
And then they're not going to get grandfathered in by getting a license to put it in your neighborhood if it's not allowed there. If it's not allowed there, they can't get a license to put it in your neighborhood if that's what you're worried about, right? They can only get a license to do this in specific areas in town. We're not changing zoning. We're just putting the enforcement and how they can do their business, 15, maybe their business can only do 10 because they just don't have enough space. That's determined by somebody else, not by Mark or the planning board members here. So we got to, we got to understand zoning and enforcement. The zoning is, that's what we control, where they can, they can actually have this business. We're not changing that tonight, we're not changing it at town meeting, and the state cannot change that on us, right?
They can.
They.
They can only change their own thing.
They can.
And then tell us that we have to put it in a rural residential neighborhood now?
No.
No.
No, what I'm saying.
Thank you. So thank you for your, you've had your time. I want to see if anybody else in the audience, because we didn't get a chance to ask after Kelly was done. You've had, you've repeated the same thing three times now tonight, unfortunately. And so we have to move upon to other people. So is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak at this time? So if you have new information, Diana, you can come back up to the podium, but we're not going to rehash zoning, and we're not going to rehash mass general law that we're going to be adding into this premise, because that's who's going to, when there's all these law rules and regulations, will be tied to this mass general law. So, I mean, I guess somebody could talk to the animal control officer, wink, wink, Mr. Lumia, and say, yeah, we're going to change the zoning, but we're still not going to allow more than 15 dogs for anybody. I mean, we could do that on the side, right? But here, where we want to tie it to mass general law, so Mark doesn't have to worry about going to count dogs. So when the animal control officer gets the call, they, she comes out and says, I told you, you could only have 15 dogs, and you got 20 now. And right there, she writes the enforcement and doesn't have to call Mark and have one of his people come out. So, again, we're not changing any zoning here. We're actually making it cleaner for our departments to work efficiently and take care of business. Mr. Ventreska.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, this change we have in front of us, this is to, so it complies with Ollie's law, correct?
I believe that's the premise, but it's not necessarily noted in here that this is for Ollie's law.
Can we get clarif, I just, I'm going somewhere in a second, so hold on, Chris.
Chair, if I may, animal control will be complying with Ollie's law regardless. It is redundant to have the zoning special permit try to also say 15 dogs is your cap, while animal control is simultaneously applying Ollie's law with whatever their number is.
So in other words, we're trying to, we have a new law that came down, we're trying to put this into our, I guess it's zoning change, right, to comply with it, because we have businesses involved right now, right? And if we sit here and wait for the state to come down with their rules and regs right now, if we did that for everything, we would never do anything in this town. Right? You know, I mean, if there, if there needs to be a change, then we come back next fall, we put it on the warrant, and we make the change. But at least let's get this ball rolling so we can get these businesses, and maybe, because we're the first ones doing it in the state, maybe we get more of those businesses in this town as well.
Great point, Dawn.
Thank you.
Me, I was just going to kind of agree with Anthony on it. I mean, it's just more of like, when I look at, or I look at a hypo, it's, it's kind of unrealistic to look at just simply hypotheticals at what the state's going, going to do at the state level. I understand hypotheticals of we're applying zoning to a parcel and we're hypothetically thinking about what's going to go there, but if we're hypothetically thinking about, like what the state, like similar to what Anthony said there, is, it's just, it's, you know, it could happen in six months, could happen in a year, could happen in two, it's fairly irrelevant to what's happening right now. So that's all I have to say with it.
Thank you, Chris. Any other follow-ups from other board members? Mr. Semaya, you got any other follow-up thoughts?
I do not have any follow-up thoughts, so thank you.
Okay. So.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just, to my knowledge, the state will not change our zoning, so we don't have to worry about that. What the state might change is their law, and this article says that we have to stick to the law. If they change the law, we still have to stick to the law. So there's nothing to worry about.
Any last minute thoughts from the public before I close the public hearing? Mr. Drew.
So Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing on Article 33.
Second.
Ollie's with the second, okay. So with, motion of second to close the public hearing, Mr. Semaya?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
For the love of God, yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Traboo?
Yeah.
Mr. Ventreska?
And I am a yes.
Okay.
So Chairman, without, I'm going to make a motion, the planning board recommend Article 33 to town meeting as presented.
As presented, this is what we're going with. So was that a second by Mr. Semaya?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have a motion of second, and we'll go to the vote. Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Traboo?
Yes.
Mr. Ventreska?
Yes.
Mr. Semaya?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Aye.
And I am a yes.
So Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing for Article 35.
Second. Open the public hearing, Mr. Semaya?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Aye.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Traboo?
Yes.
Mr. Ventreska?
Yes.
I am a yes. All right. I'm assuming Mr. Rose is not here and that you have the staff memo to clarify what we're looking at.
Yes.
Great. Take it away, Catherine.
Yes, please, thank you. All right, so first, as we were talking with the last article, we have legal opinions. They identified no text issues with it. They just wanted to highlight that whatever text changes would also be necessary in the definition section or in the required findings section, that we list that within the final warrant language itself. Right now, with the preliminary warrant, as we talked at the last meeting, we just have that language that says, and any text changes in Sections 2 and 7 as necessary to accommodate these table of use changes. So the memo that we provided you guys, the first page is just kind of very general and perfect. Can you zoom in on the map itself just for a minute? And the biggest thing that we want to make sure that everyone is clear, the planning board, the public, the town meeting, representatives that will be voting on this, you may have a specific industrial parcel in mind when we talk about these incentives, which is great, that's the point of this, but it will apply townwide anywhere that it is industrial-zoned. So we wanted to include in this memo that the overall town, everywhere that is orange is zoned industrial. Those two blue specks are the properties that are zoned commercial district. So when we talk about these changes to the table of uses, when we say retail would be allowed by rights, any of those industrial properties, not just, hey, that one site that would be nice to have. So we just wanted to clarify that. And then as far as the Section 2 definitions and Section 7 required findings, we have a full detail broken down on the next pages. And I don't know if you want to go through line by line or not, but what I did within this memo, zoom out and scroll down, just kind of gen, generally at least, anywhere that you see red text in this memo is a text change that would be needed. So where we have a use that's now going to be permitted by right, it no longer needs a special permit in that district. And so if the required findings said, do this in the industrial district, that needs to be deleted to keep up with it now that it's permitted by right. Hopefully, I worded that well. If a use was previously prohibited and now it's allowed by rights, there's no changes to the required findings because it wasn't talking about that district in the past anyway. And then the other scenario would be if it was prohibited and now allows a special permit, we need to make sure that if there's any text that is specific to zones, we also include that new zone that it's allowed in. So that's what all of these red text changes would be. As far as going down, nursing homes would be permitted by rights, so we can remove industrial. Scroll down a bit more, we'll, we'll come back to adult daycare. In retail sales, no, no zone would require a special permit, it's allowed by right wherever the zones are that allows it, so we could delete those required findings in its entirety, 75D. Dog daycares, dog kennels, dog training, we would add commercial, anywhere that industrial is already mentioned.
So that is a zoning change for dog kennels? To some extent, yes, right? We're now making a zoning change to allow dog kennels in the two parcels in our town that are commercial?
Yes.
So that is the planning board acting as the zoning enforcement officers of our town requesting a change for zoning. That's clarification.
So we also have restaurants, and again, we have many types of restaurants broken down in the land use code. So this does not include drive-throughs or other small items, but accommodations and food services, restaurant, where you see that red line, that will be permitted by right in the industrial district, so we can delete that reference. We're now adding it to be a special permit in the commercial, so we've got to add the commercial in. So that's where you see the text change like that. Banks would no longer have any zones that have a required findings, no longer have special permits, therefore, they have no required findings. And then, one of the line items is to delete auto services entirely, so when I mentioned that, I wanted to make sure that we're keeping that in red, but the required findings in that section don't require any text changes when we delete that. What else is red? Keep scrolling. And then under wholesale, it would be allowed by right, there's no more special permit, so no more required findings in that section. So everywhere that is not red, you'll see us say no text. So everywhere that is not red, you'll see us say no text change is necessary. That's because the table of uses change doesn't impact or doesn't get impacted by the language of the required findings. So everything is just fine. It already matches for all of those that don't have red.
My question would be, the table of uses has not changed from the one that was presented with all these other crossing out saying yes and no special permit.
Correct. There are no changes to the table of uses that you guys voted on and that is published in the preliminary warrant. Unless it's your warrant and you want to make changes to it tonight, of course.
No, no.
No pressure. All right. So then scrolling back up, um, that was one of the two questions you guys had before. So I do want to go back up to adult daycare, which is a new use that's being proposed. So what we identify is first, we need a definition for the use to be included. And we've identified that Burlington's definition would work well for us. So we have that proposed, a facility offering daytime programs for older adults, providing healthcare and assessment, personal care, social programs, recreational activities, meals and transportation, but not providing overnight or residential accommodations. That means the moment a business model wants to provide overnight or residential accommodations, it's no longer this use, it's some other category of use.
I make a suggestion or friendly amendment suggestion? Can we strike the term older in front of adults? Um, because it's just adult daycare. I don't want to get into the, you know, he's twenty-three years old and they, he's considered an adult, but might need that daycare. So I'm asking for a friendly amendment if the rest of the board would also consider just removing older.
I don't, I don't think it's a big, big change. So.
It's not older adult daycare, it's adult daycare, right? So let's just keep that as the way it, uh, would be written to work with it.
Mr. Chairman, just a question that's, we have that.
What adult is it? Is it eighteen and older in there? I know we have elderly at fifty-five, so I was wondering if we have.
I guess it depends on which, um, branch of our Massas- Massachusetts government you'd speak to because if, uh, you talk to the child support division, it's when they emancipated and that's like age twenty-four now, so.
So.
Um, so I, yeah, so I, well, I think minor is defined and I think an, an elder is defined, right? So.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd, our Columbia Building Commission, I don't believe there's a definition of adult in there, which we typically, I think it refers to it in the zoning, go to Webster's dictionary for words and I, I have to find.
So, I mean, it's, it's a good point.
Someone's gonna say, what is an adult?
Yeah.
I don't want someone, is it sixteen?
Yeah.
Some people are trying to push the age of voting down, right? So I think you should.
Think you're getting a little.
No, but I mean, if he's gonna change it to adult, we need to define it.
Chair, if I may.
But it's true.
Well, define older adult.
Mr. Ventreska, one second, Catherine. About intermediate adult.
Um, so first, as long as the language is comfortable to the building commissioner to enforce, um, but also I would offer that if it's not adult daycare, then it's going to be child daycare, which is a protected use in this state anyway and allowed in any zone. So if they're not going to meet this, then they're going to be allowable anywhere.
That definitions for low and high and then anything in between would be.
One chance. We're gonna do this because I don't, I won't complain eventually.
Yeah.
Are you questioning whether you're an adult or not?
Oh, we are.
Every day, every day.
Yep.
Since my cognitive event, I, uh, you know, physical age is, but I'm just not sure what my mental age is, so, uh. All right, uh, any other questions from the board? Let's see, where, where are we here with this one? We haven't even.
Chair, I had one more thing.
Who's striking older?
Well, I, when I make the motion, I'll make the motion as amended by striking older and we'll take the vote.
So we amended?
Not yet. When I make the motion, I'll do it.
Chair, I had one more point before I hand it off to you guys. So regarding adult daycare, as proposed, it is currently special permits in all zones. And there is no required findings that are drafted yet because this is a new use. So unless we come up with what the required findings are, another option, and if you have them, that's fine. But another option might be to permit it by right where you want it and to prohibit it where you don't want it. And then there are no special permits.
So I'm looking at the use table that we got and it does say general business, commercial and industrial with a Y, which would be permitted by right.
And since the intention of this article is to incentivize industrial districts, um, unless there is a current land use need for this within the lower ones, I would recommend amending it anywhere that it says special permit to prohibit it. So in the residential zones where you see S P, S P, S P.
See, yep.
S C, excuse me, um, then it would be prohibited in those zones, not allowable by special permit. If you were to do that, if that makes sense for this town and how everything is already classified, then you don't need any special permits. You don't need any required findings for this new use.
I would agree that it's probably not a use you want to allow in residential zones. And one of the reasons being is that there's a lot of, uh, vehicle traffic with them. We do have, I believe, two in town currently um, that have come in under the Dover amendment as an educational use. And there is quite a bit of, um, van traffic, which I'm not that sure that's something you want to introduce into a residential neighborhood.
This is what we voted on and I, I don't want to change this now. But that's why I asked. First question is the table of uses hasn't changed. This is what we're going with. Yes. So I don't want to get, you know, start adding in a use into an area without proper notification and allowing people to come in here and, you know, that's pretty specific. At least now, if a adult daycare wants to go into a rural residential neighborhood, they've got to go through the whole process.
No, I think what, what Catherine's saying is change that to prohibit it altogether.
Oh.
That was a discussion I had earlier because I had to bring that up with, uh, Mr. Rosa. About some concerns on introducing those into residential neighborhoods.
The way, that wouldn't affect the two that we have currently, correct?
No, those are both located in an industrial.
Well, how safe is it? I'm sorry? Well, I, I guess my question is, is well, I'm a little hesitant, maybe, maybe hit, maybe the adult daycare and the commercial than the industrial, just for the fact that if someone gets out, maybe that has less cognitive ability, they're in an industrial zone. It's not exactly super safe. Like I'm just saying, you get what I'm saying? Like someone's gonna get, you know, hit with something or get hurt. Is that really a smart move there or is it, is it like the?
Currently, under the Dover amendment, they can, if you're an educational use, you can go in any zoning district.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and that's the, I believe the.
This is more re- recreational. Is it not, not educational? Doesn't it say?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, this would be, uh.
Argue, I guess, educational in some component and then do wherever, but.
Yeah, I mean, I like to think we set the bar high for the Dover amendment.
I, I, I would hope so too, but you know, so, yeah, we, I, I think we did because we, we were, we've one project on six months. So I think we did have.
I know from my office's perspective, when people come in with it, we, we get into the articles of incorporation, whether it's, you know, you can read whether, what their mission statement is, is it educational, um, and then act for backup information on that end. My concern is, is if you introduce this as a new use and you put it into residential districts, it's almost like saying we're welcoming this.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't have an issue with, like I said, like commercial and industrial. I mean, that's what this is. It's not.
Right.
It's not residential, so I'm not worried about that at the moment, but I'm just thinking, uh, I guess we could put it in industrial and, and, and commercial. Like it's, it's, I guess, all right with me. It just, it was just a thought in the back of my head being like, all right, well, if someone gets out, doesn't necessarily know an area too well and gets like run over or something, you know, it's, it'd just be unfortunate. So that's.
Don't think they'll be open very long if they have escapees.
That is, that is also true.
Okay.
So should we, should we make, um, because I, I don't know, we don't have required findings for it. So should we? I mean, because that might, that, that would, should we just have this just in the industrial and the commercial, just by right and take the, the findings out there? Or do you want, do you want there to be findings?
So that's the recommendation is that we, on the zoning table, currently we list in the residential zoning districts, a special permit from the zoning board. The recommendation, and we'll take a vote on this separately, is to change the notes of S Z to an N, which would be a prohibited use in those residential zones.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Leave it as by right in the general business, commercial and industrial, which then would allow us to not need required findings.
Correct. Yeah.
And, and it keeps us out of the residential zones.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Right? Allow this maybe to festa for a little bit and then see how things go.
Yeah, yeah, no. Well, I'm okay with that. I don't know how, how the rest of the board sees it, but.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make a motion to, because that we did, we're changing the, uh, table of use that we already voted on. So we, we definitely need to take a separate vote on that.
Mr. Chair, if we could, um, I, I, I like the definition that we, we borrowed from Burlington. Uh, any insight on whether there are required findings that Burlington had?
I don't recall what they were.
Chair, we'll look it up really quick. Um, we'll let you know when we find it. If you want to keep going with the other discussion.
Mr. Simea, you have any thoughts? Before I get you.
You can push it forward, sir.
Perfect. Thank you, Evans. Ms. Henderson?
Yeah, I, uh, did my homework and I wrote down my thoughts. I trust this matter has been thoroughly vetted by those who brought it forward and our staff. That's all I'm gonna say about it.
Thank you. Mr. Robertson, any additional? I know you had a question, so.
Well, I, I, I do have a question on nursing home. Uh, we, we go back to that, but, um, uh, yeah, so, so my big, my big question is about the required findings and I'm, I'm wrestling in my mind with, you know, it, you know, for this a- adult care, uh, you know, are there, are there some special things that we want to make sure they're in place and? And anyway, so I think that, uh, you know, it'd be interesting to see what, what, um, Burlington has and, uh, you know, uh, you know, again, I was thinking maybe in, you know, a, an acreage and yet the, uh, the place in, uh, in Westford that I've, uh, I've, I've driven past a number of times, you know, doesn't really have a, a yard. It's all end up inside, but they have a fleet of vans. And so the point that, uh, our building commissioner made about a lot of traffic is, uh, is very, very valid. That's all I have. Thank you.
Chair, if I may.
Well, go ahead, go.
We have the Burlington table of uses up right now as well, and everything is either a yes or no. There are no special permit requirements.
So they don't have required findings?
Correct.
Mr. Drew?
Yeah, I don't have anything to add. I think, um, I'm fine with, uh, changing the table as you described to prohibit in the res, prohibit it in the residential area, but by right elsewhere.
And any of the other? And when I go to the board members, I'm asking about the whole package, not just individually.
Yeah, sorry. Um, so, so for the nursing home, um, I, I understand that industrial is being removed because it's by right, um, but I am intrigued with the acreage requirements. And so is there an acreage requirement for the industrial, for nursing home?
Thank you, Chair, through you. No, there would not be. That would be the incentive portion of making things allowable by right. Those are some of the types of things that the town would give up. If they want a smaller nursing home on a smaller property, they would be allowed to do so.
Thank you. Let me, let me think about that.
That's where the economic development comes into play is we are giving up some of that oversight in exchange for them having a streamlined process and we'd be relying on site plan review, wetlands and things like that, where we're now allowing it by right instead of special permit.
Mr. Drew, I will pass the time now, sorry.
No, that's all right. I, um, you brought, I get it. Uh, no, I'm fine with the rest of it. I think, um, the overall goal is to encourage economic development and that's what this hopes to do and, uh, let's give it a shot.
Mr. Trabu?
Yeah, I mean, side of the adult daycare, um, don't have too, too much else. Yeah, it's meant to encourage economic development. In my view, it's kind of firing from the hip in terms of it or throwing spaghetti at the ball and seeing what sticks or hoping for stuff, but it, it's, it's, uh, I hopefully it does, you know, do economic development. You know, worst case scenario, probably, you know, either stays the same or we get some more development, you know, went there. The question is, is out of the services that we're permitting, you know, by right, hopefully we get the ones that we want or, you know, you know, uh, you know, it's kind of like when, when people complain about like Chinese or pizza places, you know what I mean? Like we're getting that or, or getting a bunch of nursing homes or, or, um, so hopefully the, you know, we get a, a mix of uses in that it goes forward and, and, you know, it's what we can hope for, I guess, with that. But other than that, I'm, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, first comment, I guess, is let's make sure that we do this right, um, only because I think I've mentioned this to Kat. I have a friend who's on the Chelsea City Council and his wife sits on the planning board and they did their zoning changes. Okay, like we're doing now and they, to encourage bringing in business and a fish processing plant wants to go in there over near Admiral's Hill and the neighbors are complaining and threatening to sue because they didn't like the fact that the town, I mean, the city changed the zoning. So let's make sure that this is done properly. It appears that we are, but let's make sure. So in, in case anything comes up, um, we're standing on full legal grounds here. Um, next thing, comment wise is this, I know this was kind of mentioned with the fire station and when I was watching last meeting, um, about zoning for adult entertainment. Do we do this? Do we zone an area now or do we wait to get sued? You know, because eventually we have, I'm not saying I know of anyone coming in here, things like, you know, it's just that, do we do it now? And we put it in the spot where we want it versus forced, having it being forced upon us. Um, and, and I'm not sure it's quite with where we are here, but it, you know, I just want to make sure we've.
I think that might have, I'll, I'll defer to Catherine on that. That might, might have to be a separate article because we'd have to actually place an overlay on a parcel. Not just say like, um, it can be allowed in this area, right? We're actually picking the property it's going on. So I believe that would have to be a warrant article itself, right?
So you have to have a zone that allows the use. So in theory, we could actually say adult use is also allowed in the commercial district. So we could say that that would satisfy the state law. Um, at this point, when we talked about submitting this preliminary warrant, we said we could pull things out, but I don't think anyone is comfortable putting new things into it. It's already been noticed and preliminary is out. So I think we could shrink what we're proposing to do, but I, I wouldn't be comfortable expanding it. So it would need to be a separate article. Whether it was a use within a zone or a new zoning, either way, it, it would have to come forward later.
Okay. Thank you.
Just wanted to make the comment. I, I agree with, with, with Mr. Ventreska at some point getting the overlay. I know it's not pertaining to, but.
Just wanted to make the comment. I, I agree with, with, with Mr. Ventreska at some point getting the overlay. I know it's not pertaining to, but. Nice.
So Chair, if I may. Gonna get on this rabbit hole. I mean, the fact of the matter is we have an adult overlay. Um, it exists. If someone wants to put something there, they have to buy the fire station from the town, period. That's it. It's easy. It's done. Okay, that's the option they have and, uh, and we deal with it. We don't need to put another adult entertainment district anywhere. We have one. Thank you.
Right, uh, I will open this up to the public now. So, uh, if you're on Zoom, raise your hand. If you're in the room, please come to the podium. Or we can move along, um.
Chair, there are no hands on Zoom.
No hands on Zoom. Nobody rose from their seat to get rid of a Charlie horse, so. Close that public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to, I'm sorry, did someone say something? Close the public hearing for Article thirty-five.
Uh, Mr. Sumaya?
Yes.
Closing the public hearing. Mr. Drew?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Sir Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Trebo?
Yep.
The Ventreska?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All right, so just to make sure we're clean, Mr. Drew, can you, before we make a motion to support the warrant article, can you? Um, I kind of, let's do a vote to remove the older, just to make sure everybody's good with it. And then one, two, prohibit care from the residential zones listed as specials.
So Chairman, I'll make a motion to amend Article thirty-five to delete the word older, uh, from the definition.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Sumaya?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Trebo?
Yep.
Ventreska?
Yes.
I am a yes. Okay.
So Chairman, I'll make a motion to, um, amend the use table to prohibit adult daycare from all residential zones.
Requiring special.
Which, well, if we eliminate the, make it prohibited, you know, yeah.
Well, it's, uh, because that's what we have listed now. So now we're changing that. So we're, we're striking that.
And neighborhood business.
Right.
And neighborhood business as well, as well is, um.
We've got, uh, village residential.
I said all residential.
World residential, multifamily, the business.
Right, so I'll make a motion to strike to, to make, revise the table of use to make adult daycare prohibited in all residential zones and, uh, neighborhood business.
Second.
Mr. Sumaya, striking the adult daycare from the residential and neighborhood business zones.
Yeah, I'm a yes.
Mr. Drew?
Aye.
Sir Robertson?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
The Ventreska?
Yes.
Mr. Trebo?
Yep.
I am a yes. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to the planning board to recommend Article thirty-five as amended to town meeting.
So this is to recommend warrant article thirty-five. Mr. Sumaya?
I'm a yes.
Mr. Drew?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Trebo?
Yep.
Mr. Ventreska?
Yes.
I am a yes. Supported unanimously from the board. Thank you, everyone, for getting through that.
On the table?
Yes.
Wherely available?
I plan to do that within a day, maybe two at the most. I want to make sure that our, our co-signer or potential co-signers all have it in time.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, under other business, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August twelfth.
Second?
Under page two, under agenda item number three, mentioned that I seconded it, but it was kind of hard for me to do that from the eye of the.
Good catch. We have a, we know who the second was. I have my paperwork at home.
Somebody who was there.
Hopefully they have them.
Well, I, I try to initial all the, you know, that's why I got my little cheat sheets here to try to keep track and. All right, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Anderson.
Where it discusses item two. There's a scrivener's that I'm not really worried about, but the, the site plans, sire plans, I think anyone can understand it was side plants, but then the tone in this, the paragraph after that. The other concern the board had, and I was wondering, we weren't really concerned. It was the other topic the board discussed, or is that, uh, that's, we can also just let it go. I didn't think we had concerns. We just discussed.
Right.
It was about whether trucks would need to use the street or blah, blah, blah. So it, it wasn't.
I, so I can change it to comments. It was just trying to tell the story quickly.
Yeah, and it's also.
Item discussed.
Items.
Yeah, item discussed, yeah, topics, not because, as we, we weren't concerned, but then again.
So you can write it, the board discussed the truck turning and the street kind of thing, you know?
It's no biggie.
So there'll be a slight revision to that, beginning of that one sentence right there, for us to say we discussed the fire station trucks. I bet it was a great concern.
And then Marley's going back to the previous, um, comment. Were you the second for that vote?
Sure.
That motion?
Sure. Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, then the board approve the minutes of August twelfth as amended.
Second. Yes, you can. Okay.
Sure.
You can second it.
All right, see you, watch.
Ed, any vote?
Accepting the minutes, Mr. Sumaya?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Trebo?
Yep.
Mr. Ventreska? Mr. Ventreska?
Can I abstain? I'm abstaining.
Okay.
You can abstain.
And I am a yes. All right.
The Chairman, under other business, we have next committee reports.
Evans, uh, anything from CPC?
Um, I, I will have some update for you because CPC is meeting this Thursday at six. Once, um, that meeting is done, I'll have some update on, on our next meeting on Monday.
Chris Nimcog?
Um, we're, we're meeting, I mean, we're meeting, one more meeting. Um, no, we're, we're gonna meet this, um. Uh, what is it there? Uh, yeah, everything's been, everything, everything's been fine. We're gonna have elections soon in, uh, September and in August we had off. So we didn't really, um, so that, that's regarding Nimcog. Um, and then for the, uh, Lorax Committee. So basically I, I got the chair for that. So long, long story short, I'm just gonna have for, for the agenda, we're just gonna go over the, uh, the guide to local, uh, tree bylaws for the communities in Massachusetts. So I'll just have people read through it and then we'll discuss and then just kind of chart a vision of, of where we want to go, uh, from there and organizing the meeting. So. But that, the, the meeting there is we essentially did, it was, our, our first meeting was just getting Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, and then planning for, uh, the meeting that is tomorrow. Um, so, and hopefully it will be, it will either be at six, uh, six fifteen or a bit later. I know, because, you know, you, you said that you guys are running with your meeting. So whenever you guys finish, we'll, uh, go in there. So that's essentially what we have planned for tomorrow and.
What are the other appointments on that committee, Chris?
Let's see. So hold on, let me just, uh, uh, Bill, Bill Buil, Builans? Um. Kamarinsky and let's, his wife. And then, um, Mary, was it Mary Ann? Is it Mary Ann Jo? I was like, I just, I just, I just Mary, but Mary Ann, um, Jones there.
Mary Jones.
Mary Jones, yeah, in the office over there. And then we have Shelley. For, I don't know, you know, from town, town meeting, uh, was it, was it Rosa? Yeah, okay. Lip bomb, yeah. Um, so let's see, who, who else we got? It was five total. There's me, Marinsky.
Yeah, that sounds right. You, Bill, Kamarinsky, Mary Jones and Shelley. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, it's five total. All right, yep. Should be everyone and then Trek joins us. So, um, yeah.
All right, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Marley's?
Uh, open space. We met September second. Um, I think the most important thing was, uh, the extension from the seven to a ten-year plan. And, uh, the greater lower bike path plan. We had, uh, some signs here and there, um, and it was on the BATV bulletin board. The survey is now closed. There's a meeting on August fifteenth, which I'll miss. Sorry, but I'll watch the recording.
I'd ask Blake and Ed on a town manager screening committee, but, uh, we have been successful in hiring a new town manager. So thank you for your efforts and, uh, and what's that? Uh, planning board rules and regulations, Mr. Robertson?
Uh, yes, so, uh, we have not met since our last meeting. We'll meet, um, on, uh, the eleventh uh, to continue our work, working on our policies and procedures document. Uh, we will be lifting, uh, thank you, uh, planning board, uh, planning department staff for getting a editable copy of the Nimcog work, because we will be lifting a lot of that for, um, some of the rules and regs documents that we'll be working on next. Thank you.
And long range master plan, Mr. Ventreska?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we've been meeting right along. Um, our committee is myself, uh, Selectman Favro for the second appointee, Mary McBride, FinCom appointee. We've been going through the matrix that the ladies in the office have developed and I think we've pretty much gone through that matrix right now after the last meeting. The moderator finally did make an appointment, uh, to, it was Don Lee Torrey, but as of the last meeting, she had not been sworn in yet. So she, she had another meeting anyway. So she, she did not participate with us. We're still waiting for the school committee to appoint someone. Hopefully that gets done.
They met tonight.
All right, so that'll be done hopefully tonight and then hopefully get, uh, word from the clerk, um, who that is. Um, we are technically scheduled to do maybe a quick Zoom call on September twenty-sixth. However, I do need to talk to Kat about that. So, um, we may need to reschedule. I think it's, I thought it was Thursday, but anyway, that is, you're right, we gotta look at that. Um, so.
Thank you, Tony.
And other than that, um, that's it right now. Actually, we move along pretty well. I was kind of surprised the three of us doing this, how much we got done. And actually, how much of the master plan has been implemented, even if it was just one piece, you know, one thing, it was just for me personally, it was kind of surprising, considering, um, previous complaints that I have had with previous master plans where it gets developed and then it gets put on a bookshelf and never to be looked at again. Pleasantly surprised because I previously thought, you know, it's gonna be a waste of money, but clearly we've been following it this time around. So kudos to everyone in the town hall doing that.
Good, thank you, Tony. Appreciate that feedback. Uh, staff updates, Catherine?
So a couple of community events first. So now that the Nimcog Bike and Ped Plan is closed, next thing we're gonna ask you guys for is the LRTA uh, bus riding survey. So even if you don't ride the bus, I would encourage you to find the survey and tell them why you don't or what other methods you use instead. One of my favorite questions is where it prior, it asks you to prioritize, would you want them to have more trips within their existing hours? Longer hours of availability or more areas of coverage? So if you could only increase one, which would it be? So that's my personal favorite question on that survey. And anyone who rides the bus and anyone who doesn't ride the bus, you're encouraged to take this survey. Um, the other community event that I want to mention is that the Veterans Honor Stroll is getting planned for Veterans Day Celebration. I believe the date is November second. Their flyer is all over social media right now and I believe that they're looking for, um, some sort of vendors or sponsors to help pull off the events as well. So back to the office and the boring stuff. So a couple of the other warrant articles that we're seeing out of our office under the open space and rec plan committee will have Article thirty-one and that is a request to transfer several properties that are already owned by the town into conservation status for the town. Um, almost all of them are wetlands. They're along the riverbanks. Where we did the Tufts study, and I know we've talked about that before, Tufts ranked twenty-seven parcels as a perfect score that should be suitable for conservation. And so while we're at it, the committee said, well, let's grab the adjacent other town-owned properties next to those as well. They might have scored a four point eight, a four point nine, who knows, but let's grab those also, again, wetlands and riverfronts. So we'll see that on Article thirty-one. There's also a CPC funding request this fall. Those two projects are for the Historical Commission to fund, um, our historic survey plan. Again, plans get made and then they go on the shelf. So the Historical Commission is looking to implement the survey plan and make sure that we're studying the sites in town and getting them the historic preservation protections that they need. The other project is Kids Connection Playground upgrades. Um, as far as the Historic District Commission, um, for anyone following the Talbot Dam, that appeal public hearing is going to be on Zoom on September sixteenth. And then for all of these articles that are coming out of our office, we're presenting to FinCom on September twenty-third. And I'm done.
What time is FinCom on September twenty-third?
I don't know. I would just look at their agenda and go there when they tell me to.
Probably seven.
Probably seven. I think they started tonight at seven, so.
Mr. Chairman, would you like us to attend or would you like us to stay away?
They're your articles. I'm not taking anything from you.
I said, will it be good if we're there? It's probably not good if I'm there. With FinCom?
I feel the same way.
Maybe if Tal goes.
So Mike Rosa, select board member, co-signer for the table of uses article, Mike Rosa is also Chair of the Open Space and Rec Plan. So he is also going to be in attendance as far as those two specific items. Um, dog daycare, I believe, animal control is also going to be there and CPC was already heard.
I'll ask Mike Rosa. If there'll be a good influence or a bad influence.
It's open to the public. You can all crash the party.
Yeah, but you want it to pass.
I didn't say you had to talk.
All set?
Uh, under staff updates, yes. We just have that one bullet after that.
So why don't you, uh, lead that off for us?
All right, so our next scheduled meeting is for Tuesday, October fourteenth. That's because our normal Monday is Columbus Day holiday. The issue with that is if Fall Town Meeting goes for three nights, we cannot meet that night. So for anything that we're continuing, like four oh nine Boston Road or for any new applications that we're expecting to get this week, we need to know what date we're scheduling those meetings for.
Yeah. So is it better to make it a different date or, like you said, fifteen, the Wednesday?
All right, Mr. Robertson? When are five P M?
I'm okay with a five P M if you guys are, but that's up to you and we can verify with any applicants that they can make those times.
It's a long night, but, uh.
It just might be a little tight for those of us that still work.
Yeah, there are some of us that do still work. It was the retirement.
You ever did?
If there is town meeting that night, you will have to adjourn in time.
Uh, so uh, Catherine had a couple dates on her calendar that um, well, she looked at the different boards and committees that might already have meetings set up, and tried to, you know, line up a couple options for us to discuss. And one of them can also be an earlier time slot on the fourteenth, but go ahead, Catherine.
Absolutely, so the biggest things that we have to avoid are Fall Town Meeting. Charter says we're not going to conflict with them, so we know we're not going to conflict with them, so if we start at five P M, just know that we have to adjourn and continue anything else at a certain time, but we can at least get things going. Um, Select Board and School Committee would be the next main conflicts, because BATV live streaming, and that's where kind of the big elected boards, and we want to make sure that we're not conflicting with each other, if at all possible. Um, and then we have our other staff meetings, like H D C and Open Space, just if you want staff, then we'd like to be able to, to staff all of our boards. So what we're looking at is at least thirty days out from tomorrow, which is our already advertised deadline to submit applications, we believe one site plan is coming in, we have not heard of anything else. Um, so at least thirty days for that to get, to allow for proper notice. We would say Wednesday the fifteenth, Thursday the sixteenth, fourth night of town meeting, Wednesday the twenty-second, or Thursday the twenty-third.
So hearing those four dates, um, does that take anybody's, anybody out of any dates?
I mean, I mean, I'd have to check to see what Nimcog's doing in October when their meeting is, I think it's like third Wednesday, so I'd have to, I'd have to check.
Though the fifteenth is out? Yeah, the, that Wednesday, the Wednesday after I'm out, but the Thursday the twenty-third, I think will work. We would have to defer the uh, rules and regulations.
Fourth, right, we kind of.
Yeah.
Rules and regs, so we.
Yeah, we can kick.
Yeah, so I would defer.
Yeah, if you kicked that, we had to.
So I, before we get too far into the month, our November meeting is scheduled for the tenth, so what does that pose for November, Catherine?
Yes, so what that means is any revisions, peer review comments, things like that for the new site plan are going to be extremely rushed. Um, if it could be done within four weeks, and we're only giving them two to three, that could in theory be requiring them to sit until December to actually get it done, um, which is still within a reasonable amount of time, and you guys need to have a date that you need to have, but that is a potential impact to a potential applicant.
I'm using a go on the fifth.
But we skip October. Skip it. It's only one thing you have written down for it.
The new application, if it were to open in November, that would still be within sixty-five days. Um, that would give plenty of time for the rev, for the reviews and potential revised comments and revisions to come back, um, but that would be a lot for you guys to kind of catch up with when it gets to you.
Yeah.
Hmm.
It would be interesting.
There's um, the continuation of four oh nine Boston, which again would give time for the, the technical reviews.
She didn't say no.
She was like an absolute mess.
She just gave her advice on what would happen, she didn't say no, I think, I think she might be looking forward to that, she just doesn't want to say it.
I don't know how to take a night off, that's alright.
Well, right, I mean, I mean, you know, the, the issues with, with, with town meeting and.
It's town meeting. In all honesty.
Well, don't jinx it.
Our conflict is with the third.
Right, but then, wasn't one of the options the?
Thursday the sixteenth.
Yes.
It wouldn't be a fourth night if it went that far.
Well, can we tentatively do the sixteen? I'm okay with that. I don't have any conflicts on Wednesdays and Thursdays, those are my easy nights.
Talk to the moderator. How are you? Three meetings max.
Yeah. Be doing a lot of move the questions, then.
Cause I, 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 you know, I heard from Tony's not gonna be here on the fifteenth, Blake says the twenty-second. So not, one member not being here, you know, destroys a meeting, right, uh, we've scheduled a meeting for Monday that Marley's cannot attend. Um, so it's not um, out of the question that, you know, you have a meeting where somebody's not there, but um, I, I guess if the sixteenth, does anybody have any, like, like?
I, I don't, it's just, it's probably just really dependent on town meeting, but I don't have any issues with, with Thursday, um, but my, my question is, I guess, and then this relates to, um, if we do have it, then, and a-actually, no, I'll just, I'll bring that up at the fifteenth, I'm, never mind.
Uh, so it sounds like uh, Mr. Sumaya, how about you, uh, any dates that you know you might not uh, be available for?
I mean, the sixteen sounds okay to me, I mean, if CPC is not meeting, I think they're probably meeting on the ninth, so I should be okay.
Um, so.
We're gonna have to change CPC also, because of its, because, yeah, the second out of town meeting, but Planning Board, Board first.
Yeah, because that would be after town meeting anyways, so CPC is very administrative, yes, if you will, not to minimize their work.
They'll be queuing up their next annual round.
Right.
Don't, 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 don't.
They're not gonna have uh, like, you know, multiple projects that they have to go through at that time.
No, I, I.
They've just gone through town meeting, and it will be uh, discussing um, monies left over and things of the such, so.
Yeah.
Alright, so I think um, I will.
Chair, can I ask one more question?
Okay.
Um, to, to copy Blake's idea with the five P M on the fourteenth, if you guys were to move to Thursday the sixteenth to be safe, heaven forbid there's a fourth night of town meeting, no one wants that, I know, knock on wood, um, would you want an earlier start time so that way you can at least convene and adjourn and keep things moving earlier in the day? Would everyone be available to come earlier?
Right, so I think uh, we also heard from a few members uh, here to my left that uh, still visit the office space and, and work. Uh, they're not available for a five P M start time, and I don't want to ask them.
About six.
Well, I was gonna say five thirty, I mean, literally, we'd be driving.
I mean, it's the only thing, is can we really get anything done? In an hour?
In an hour.
Yeah, one hour, really, it's one, because we'd have to adjourn by six-thirty to give us all a a minute to go out and breathe some fresh air, take a sip of coffee and come back into.
One and a sip, I think.
Do a, a night of town meeting, because let me tell you, if we're there, we're, we're all gonna need big buckets of coffee that night.
We're Xanax, um.
I'm really hoping we're not on a fourth night, but I, I want to give them, you know, a direction for postings, so.
I mean, it's, it's either scheduled at five o'clock, and then for us, struggles become a third of this year, we should have.
And as you said before, if one person misses, one or two people missing the meeting, or at least part of the meeting. You know, not the end of the world.
If you're okay with that, I'm struggling. Um, because literally, we'd be walking in.
So the suggestion is to.
Place five pizza.
And ten sixteen at a five P M start?
Uh-oh. Okay?
Oh, I thought you guys were saying a little bit later than five, so. Assuming that there's no town meeting, then whenever you start is just whenever you start for the night, if there is a town meeting, you can start, make your motions to continue again, and then get out of there in time. So, it might not need to be as early as five.
Doug McQuarrie, is it just too late?
Once we advertise, we advertise.
You have to open it, but, yeah.
We could open it recesses at seven, don't be silent? I'm, I'm just asking, just.
Technically, technically, I think so.
You'd be, you'd be dragging those applicants for a while.
Okay.
Well, it's better than no.
But five thirty. I'm okay with five if you guys are, but I think five thirty or six would be just as fine.
Five thirty is fine with me.
Okay, so let's do, you want to make a motion, Mr. Drew, for?
Chairman, I'll make a motion, our next meeting be, our next regular meeting be scheduled for October sixteenth, posted at five thirty.
Second.
Second.
P M. Just in case anybody wanted.
We'll wait, we'll wait for you.
Mr. Sumaya?
I'm okay with that.
The Drew?
Aye.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Traboo?
Yeah.
Mr. Vintresca?
Yes.
I am a yes.
And Chair, if I can please uh, clarify that item number four tonight, the mixed-use special permit of four oh nine Boston Road, which was continued to our October date, will be heard at that October sixteenth, five thirty P M meeting.
Yes.
Thank you.
With that, Mr. Chairman, will make a motion to adjourn?
Second. Okay, uh, motion made by Mr. Drew, second to me. Mr. Sumaya, motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Right, Mr. Drew?
Aye.
Ms. Henderson?
Yeah.
Yes, and good night. Mr. Traboo?
Yes.
Mr. Vintresca?
Yeah.
Yes, good night, Bill Rica.